We're live.
Okay. Good evening. I'd like to call this April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, a meeting of the City of Manassas Park Planning Commission to Order. The time is seven oh-two. I have a statement to read before I read who is here. Per the General Assembly's approval of the Governor's amendments to the biennial budget, the Planning Commission may now meet electronically without a quorum actually assembled in a single location and without the in-person Planning Commission members voting on the participation of those who are remoting in. The following benchmarks for the meeting this evening have been met. First, the Governor has declared a state of emergency for the current COVID-nineteen pandemic in accordance with Code of Virginia. Second, a declared emergency makes it impractical or potentially unsafe for the governing body to assemble on a single location, and that applies to the Planning Commission, and guidance from state and federal government support this determination. Therefore, the Planning Commission will be meeting with various members participating electronically through go-to meeting. Third, the meeting is to discuss or transact the business statutorily required or necessary to continue operations of the Planning Commission. Fourth, the Planning Commission will make available a recording or transcript of the meeting on its website in accordance with Code of Virginia. Fifth, notice has been and will continue to be provided to the public using available methods. Lastly, we have made and will continue to make arrangements for public access through electronic means, including the ability to comment. Those participating electronically will be Commissioner Beckett's. Those participating in person are Commissioner Collier, Evans, Mensing, and Finkel. I'll move along. I will take care of the moment of silence, pledge allegiance, if we would stand for the moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, would anyone care to make a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Moved, second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The agenda is approved. Next item is adoption of minutes from March seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one meeting. Commissioner Collier and myself have offered some changes. Are there any other changes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, hearing none. Would anyone care to make a motion to adopt the meeting minutes as amended for the March seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one meeting?
So moved.
Moved, second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item is time for members of the public. Are there any members of the public here to speak to an item that's not on the agenda?
No chairman people, very none.
Very good, thank you. Okay, new business. So tonight is the formal hearing for the FY twenty-twenty-two, FY twenty-twenty-six Capital Improvement Program. I'll be, I'll open up the public hearing. The time is seven oh-seven. Commissioner Beckett does have a copy of the, of the comprehensive plan, and he has reviewed that in comparison to the capital improvement program. So all Commissioners will be sitting for this public hearing. So I'd like to begin there.
Okay, thank you. Sure. Michael, can you see the slides up on the screen?
Yeah.
Okay, great. And good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. Tonight I want to brief you on changes since the briefing in February to keep it simple, along with kind of additions of revenue pictures, as well as something we didn't have back in the initial presentation. So I'd as well go over tonight the changes and then the updated CIP five-year model. Next Tuesday, we'll also be briefing the governing body on the CIP as well. So we'll do the very comprehensive presentation that we gave you all last time, so if you want to listen in again.
Reinforcement.
And we will have a couple of additional projects that I'll go over with you tonight that were left off the original presentation. So back at the end of January, there was a parking work session that followed a parking town hall that we had back in the fall. The town hall was also about community enforcement and general community maintenance issues zoning and parking as well. And we heard from the, from the public there about concerns. And then the governing body held a work session at the end of January to discuss some of the recommendations that staff made as part of that town hall and also discuss the feedback they got from the community. And so it was a long deliberation, and Councilmember Mensing was there too, so she must have had anything to love. It was a good meeting. But the governing body wanted to do this in steps is where they came up with where they want to first evaluate because they heard from the community and from general kind of staff evaluation of kind of driving around and just kind of getting general observations. One of the challenges that we have is we have a lot of commercial vehicles that park on our right-of-way, and that ends up taking up spaces from residential vehicles we're looking for parking. This is mainly an issue on the west side where a lot of additions have occurred since the fifties without the additional parking capacity that was addressed by the governing body recently as well and why the Planning Commission was the ordinance amendment to stop that practice from happening. However, we can't go back in time and change that, so the damage has already been done unfortunately. So we're evaluating ways to help our residents who continue to express concerns about the lack of parking options. And since a large percentage of vehicles appear to be commercial vehicles defined in that meeting in multiple ways, including those with logos on them, work trucks, RVs. There was a, there was a list provided of what we would classify as prohibited now from parking overnight, so park in the daytime. And this code hasn't passed yet. This is just a discussion at this point. We're bringing back the code amendment to you all and to the governing body as well. But we have some time to pass that and get that implemented because to do that, to have a prohibition of commercial vehicles overnight from eight PM to eight AM, which is what was discussed, we're going to have to put the signs up there. Because if you don't have the signs stating that, then there's nothing police can do. They can't ticket someone, and that won't stand up in court just because the ordinance says that, that you actually have to have a sign for that purpose. So when we briefed the governing body, we had an estimate that Calvin and his team were able to develop for doing a comprehensive street sign program. They used Corolla as a model, as an example, and then took the example there and essentially multiplied it to equalize across all the lane miles that we have in the city where, where the signs would be going specifically stating no commercial vehicles permitted overnight, eight PM to eight AM. Caveat with that, though, is that the, on people's driveways, so they will be allowed to have two commercial vehicles. And because we know we have a blue collar working community where people do have work vehicles that they need to be able to park, what we just don't want is kind of abuse where the company vehicles are just massively being parked on the streets and taking away parking from, from our residents. So this is something similar to what Fairbanks County does, so there is some precedence to this in, in Virginia. So the governing body wants to give this shot, see how this improves the situation over the next few years. And if there's more that needs to be done, then we can, we can revisit it. But that, that, this is kind of the first step, and we were, we were directed by the governing body not only bring forward the code amendment for consideration, but also to project in the budget what, what this would cost for the city to do. And again, that was based off that analysis. We're projecting around $250,000 to contract this work out to be done throughout the city. And then, you know, once the COVID is amended and the signs are up, and we take the bags off and we start enforcing this prohibition, of course, after letting our community know, just constantly just putting out the messaging that this is a change coming. So this was a project that was left, that didn't make it in the February presentation, but, and it missed the spreadsheet as well. But we, we've now included it back in the, in the budget spreadsheet, which is on the website and also now on the CIP presentation. So any questions about this project?
Questions?
Yeah, will this also, will there be one sign that says prohibited, commercial vehicles, and the no parking here at a corner? Are they going to be able to?
I think the goal would be to try to combine when feasible, just to make it efficient. And then in the future, if we add different things, you've seen it, we kind of have one sign below another sign as well, so.
Oh, right.
Yeah, so we're going to try to be as efficient as possible where it makes sense and try to have everything on one sign.
Good, thanks.
But eventually, our dream is to also have kind of, you know, street sweeping, like, like first Wednesday of March or whatever for this street, you know, no parking for street sweeping, or like a couple of options at that time as well. So there's different things we want to do with signage, but this is very comprehensive across the city all at once. We want to be equitable in enforcement. So we want to have all the signs up. Code passed, we've advertised, and we take off the bags, and the signs are there for enforcement.
I have a question. In order to identify as a commercial vehicle, will it have to have signage on the vehicle in order to?
Yeah, there was, there was a definition of work truck. So we still have more work to do on this. So the code amendment will be coming to the Planning Commission as well. There'll be a few changes. But the definition of what a commercial vehicle would be, that's going to be a big part of figuring this out of what we want to bring. There was initial discussions of ideas, and we'll, we'll bring that forward for further discussion. But the goal would be also work trucks, so we just don't want people taking off logos. But they're clearly commercial vehicles that are now being parked on.
Well, it's a plain no signage, but it's got thirteen ladders stacked on top. That's pretty obvious, yes. It's not my, my kid's soccer vehicle, yeah.
So we're hoping that, that with that, businesses will find somewhere else to park these commercial vehicles to start taking and towing, and that will free up more parking spaces for residents. That's the move. The next project, this was approved in February as well, or actually, I think it was March second, time is a little off here. But this was a recent approved project. It was part of the budget amendment adopted in December to inquire, to potentially purchase a parking enforcement vehicle and to hire a parking enforcement officer. And we brought back some options for, for purchase in March, and the governing body decided to go with our recommendation, which is this parking enforcement vehicle specialized specifically for, for that mission, allowing the parking enforcement officer to get out of, via both doors, so they don't necessarily have to get out on the street side where cars are coming. They can, they can give a ticket, they can come out the right side. This is, this vehicle is specifically designed for parking enforcement. And because we don't have a lot of, you know, high, higher speed streets in our, in our city, it makes a lot of sense. The interesting part was that the vehicle wasn't the more expensive part. It was actually the technology that enables enforcement. That you can see the comsonic technology. That was the expensive part of the project, but it's well worth it. It's a passive system where the parking enforcement officer is going to be just driving around, and it is scanning everyone's plates, and it will then pop up, hey, this person has not, you know, paid or, you know, registration is out of date, or whatever it is, and they can actually start enforcing on that. And there's potential also to have the data for stolen vehicles, for other things as well, to just give law enforcement more, more data on a passive basis versus them having to check everything. The decals are still good because that's residents being like, hey, this car doesn't have decals. It's been waiting there for a long time. And this vehicle can go out there, scan it, and get, get the information about what's happening with that specific vehicle as well. So it's a, it's a good way to ensure that we continue to ramp up parking enforcement, not just for tax compliance, but also for the previous slide issue, making sure that vehicles that are, you know, authorized to be parking here are actually doing that and, and bringing up parking for, for our residents as well. This will be very important as well once the downtown is up and running and we start moving to areas within the downtown of three-hour parking zones or four-hour parking zones to make sure that you don't have a lot of residential overflow in the commercial parking and commercial parking for the businesses that we're going to have here as well. So this will allow for more efficient enforcement on that. So that was something that the governing body voted on in early March, so we need to incorporate it into. We had a little bit of money in twenty-one, but we, we decided to shift it to twenty-two where we have sufficient funding because of a surplus that we're, we're seeing now to go ahead and just outright buy the vehicle versus doing a six-year financing plan that we previously showed. So we save, you know, a good $6,000 on the interest for, for the payments of those vehicles. Are there any questions about this project?
Here's Michael. Just a quick question. Is there an estimate of associated revenue that will be sort of garnered by making this investment?
Yeah, so the current, so parking enforcement has ramped up pretty significantly over the last year and a half since we finally implemented our parking software. But our patrol officers have been the ones doing it, but the revenues have been over $200,000. So it went from like $30,000 to $200,000 overnight in a year. So the annual payments and you're, we're essentially making a quote-unquote profit out of this right now. That's not the intent of the program, right? The intent of the program is to address parking infractions. So the investment in this that not only helps alleviate, and the parking enforcement officer allows patrol officers to do their, their other more important responsibilities and allow this officer to focus specifically on parking. Because we also froze two police officer positions over the past year, so we're short on staff. But again, it's invest, reinvesting those funds to help with the mission, right? So it's not just, it's ensuring that not, that that money is just not going to subsidize the general fund, and we're, we're, you know, we're just making money out of this. We actually want to continue to invest in ensuring that parking infractions are being enforced, and we're helping our community out with that. So that, that's part of this. But there's more than enough revenue right now to cover the parking enforcement officer, the administrative support for accounts receivables, collection support to the treasurer from the police department, and then for this vehicle as well. So there's, there's more than enough funding, especially as collections improve. We hope that the revenue will go down the next few years because parking enforcement or compliance gets better. But even with that, we'll, we'll still likely be breaking even going forward with between staffing and revenues.
Good, thank you. I have a question. Maybe isn't the appropriate time, but it hit my head and it'll go away. Will this be only operated during daylight hours, or will there be?
The chief will kind of designate when, what kind of, what trends we're seeing. A lot of, I think, the fractions occur overnight, so don't be surprised if this vehicle.
You'd see it on the street.
Overnight, taking people, especially when we get to the commercial vehicle prohibition. That's going to be a big part. We're starting with one parking enforcement officer. The goal is to expand to a division that exists in the other smaller cities in Northern Virginia. So any way you can stagger, you can't have your daytime enforcement, but also have that nighttime enforcement.
That was going to be my next question. So, thank you.
Any other questions on this? Okay. And then now the updated five-year model. I'll describe kind of what changed and also give you an update on revenues as well. So last time I presented this, it only showed expenditures. We now have revenues and kind of the revenue highlight. You can see when reading here the different categories of revenue. You have the transportation revenue and then the proffers escrow cash. That's what we get from development proceeds, right? From either escrow funds to support different efforts in, within that, the downtown effort or the proffers, which is just general cash for our capital infrastructure, which the city in turn then utilizes to contribute to the META thirty percent fund. We have to contribute money every year to that fund, so we essentially use our proffer money for that. So it, it provides, that funding was running out within the next two years. This keeps that fund going for another decade. So that's positive. But you can see $8.6 million in proffer escrow revenues from the downtown development forecast. Assuming what's currently planned is actually what ends up happening with the, with the development. So that's kind of a big highlight. This row here, there was some other transfer firm funds. This is what's coming from the annual operating budget to support the CIP. And it's been a lower kind of number, but you can see as we kind of ramp up capital spending, the kind of the, the amount increases, and a big part of that too later on is when we use some of the facility stuff like the city hall lease. The tax base is improving significantly, and a piece of that is now going to pay for, for those, those city hall lease payments as well. From an expenditure standpoint, the two changes from FY twenty-two, you know, there was a $300,000 change from the last time you saw this. It came out of these two rows, transportation and police. The first was the transportation for the street signs that we talked about, the commercial vehicle parking prohibition, and then for the police, for the parking enforcement vehicle and the comsonic technology to enable parking enforcement. So that, that increased these two categories, which increased the total in FY twenty-two. And then the changes in FY twenty-fourth and twenty-six were increases in the city hall lease prices. Interest rates started going up as we were working on this, and we saw an impact with those interest rates. That went up by fifty basis points just within the span of two weeks. So we'd like issued it like just two weeks prior, and we would have had some savings. So that, that amount did go up. The payments did go up in twenty-four through twenty-six. When I presented this to you last time in February, it was just initial projections. This was the final numbers we have now for that city hall lease. Total for, for the general fund, not, not a lot of changes again beyond, again, that's, that's small change for PD after the transportation that I just outlined here. And then for the facilities, you see that in this category. There goes a slight uptick as well. But the, not, not a significant shift in this slide from, from last time I presented, you can find those few changes. For water and sewer for revenues, the, the highlight here is the TAFV revenues. That's first row on top for revenues. So not only is the development helping improve the tax base for the general fund, allowing us to do deeper tax cuts and fund other initiatives, it's helping our enterprise funds out a lot as well. You, you will see that in Calvin's great presentation last night where he outlined the utility revenues from an operating standpoint and also from capital and all these associated expenditures as well. But these TAFV revenues are $12 million. That in conjunction with the increase in user fee revenues with having more customers. So you have more customers now that you get to allocate your fixed costs towards. It significantly reduced the pressure for rates to go up with inflation. We haven't increased water and sewer rates for a very long time despite inflation. And with this, the, the rate averages over ten years of a 1% increase, which is less than inflation. If we're able to get some additional federal funding, whether it's to the infrastructure bill or the American Rescue Plan, to allocate towards some of these critical capital infrastructure projects, there may be an opportunity to reduce rates, which we know will be important for, for our residents. And so that's, that's something we're looking at closely. The long-term picture for the water and sewer fund is very good. There, there's going to be a lot of opportunities, assuming kind of things stay constant. There's going to be a lot of opportunities at the end of the decade to really consider a way to decrease fiscal reduction, significant reduction in debt, which you can see up here is the biggest part of, of the expenditure component for, for the water and sewer infrastructure. But that $28 million in spending is critical for capital because, as Calvin briefed last night, you don't want to have massive amount of leaks in your system where you're, you're, you start ending up reaching capacity sooner. And if you reach capacity for both your water capacity and your sewer capacity, that's where your debt payments start to skyrocket. And it's the debt payments that drive that administrative fee in, in your bill. So you want to keep that as low as possible, just like in the general fund, you want to keep debt as low as possible or to a manageable level so it doesn't impact your, your tax rates. That's the same thing here. So we got to invest in water system and sewer system improvements. But the good thing again with the downtown development, we're able to do that and while keeping rates over the next ten years at a relatively under-inflation. If we get some additional support, potentially even reducing rates or keeping that at middle room despite the region having the same increase in rates. For expenditures, again, fifteen million out of twenty-eight million is for debt. And then you have your infrastructure maintenance and upgrades and your water system specific, the, the plan fixed improvements that Calvin and our consultants have developed. Facilities, so they, the, the share of water and sewer fund for facilities. And then more importantly, in the latter, when we start talking about acquisition of a new building for the community development department, which includes Public Works, which includes our water and sewer enterprise, their share of that contribution for that effort, for that facility. That's a big piece of what's going to happen over the next few years. And then other categories such as equipment comprised of remaining acres. So I'm on one big change. Again, this is kind of my, my fault. It's a misinterpretation of the Russia Branch Stream Restoration. We did show kind of the assumed SLAFT revenues of 50% on the previous model. So the, the total price tag for the projects is actually 20 million, not 10 million. We, we are looking at different options to keep it at a $10 million price tag for the publicized partnership. But again, we have no final word on that yet, but that's the goal, is to be able to reduce the price tag. We're going to continue to pursue grants, so we're going to continue to pursue direct congressional aid as well in the next few years to try to get money. But this, this you can see is the, it starts overwhelming the rest of the CIP in terms of scale. It used to be that transportation was always the biggest part of our overarching CIP. Not just, it still is for the general fund, but now for the entire CIP, you can see stormwater now. With that one project, Russian Branch Stream Restoration overtakes everything. It's just, it's an enormous project to scale with that one. That's our way of accomplishing the, the mandates that we have for community reduction. So two, two things with that are not just the payments we have to make for those years, but also the debt that we're going to have to issue, hopefully via revenue bonds, to be able to pay for that project if we can't figure out another mechanism for doing that. So that's the, that's the biggest pressure right now that we have. Those rates are the ones that are going to go up significantly over the next few years, and residents are going to be very upset about that we're going to have to figure out something, what to do in terms of external revenue sources. But that's where there is no base big enough to support what we have to do in terms of expenditures. But you can see 80% of the total CIP is at one, one critical project that gets us to the finish line for the reduction. So this is something, you know, that we're, we've been aware of. We're continuing to explore other options, and we're going to pursue grants heavily for this to help out enforcement for the American Rescue Plan. Stormwater was not called out as one of the uses. Hopefully with the, the infrastructure bill, that will be added to it. Hopefully it'll pass, and we'll be able to get some.
Any amount of that amount would be very good for hopefully getting some of that, that's good.
That'd be the best thing that can happen for our residents, because if you notice with my, the budget model, tax rates are going to be going down from the general fund standpoint. Water and sewer rates, we just talked about that. Not a lot of pressure for the rates to go up for the downtown support. This is the one area where there's significant pressure for rates to, to go up to, and it's really to deal with that, that one massive project. And so the entire city CIP, when you factor in general fund, schools, the schools request a stormwater, water and sewer. When you take out the debt payments, because we do that for the general fund, we have separate debt fund for that. And then the contributions to proffer funds, which aren't really expenditures, are just contributions to another fund that ends up coming back to us. So that, that funding that we contribute to META, we use that for transportation projects. So just giving us, giving ourselves money through a different channel there. So taking out those two things, the actual expenditure, the dollars leaving the city from the CIP standpoint would be seventy-two point one million dollars across all funds over the next five years. And the biggest piece again, look at that stormwater. It's one to double transportation. And that was not true just a few, a few years ago. Water, sewer, and transportation are about equal. And then your administrative and overhead, that includes your facilities. And then the biggest piece of that is going to be the acquisition of the building, community development building, plus the start of the city hall lease payments, which before we had no way of paying, and we're going to be a much larger burden for the CIP if we weren't able to address it. So that's all I had in terms of updates since the last meeting. During the last few years, there's been a lot more changes, but our revenues are looking much better now. There's a lot less than the previous years. There was a lot of cuts that happened from the original round of CIP to the final one that actually survived. So we were able, if you look at the unfunded capital tab in, in the overall budget, that's a much better picture now. The one outstanding thing that the governing body know that, that we're not doing enough of is the, our road maintenance. There's still not enough funding for that. So that's going to be an ongoing discussion for not just how we deal with the Russia Branch, but how do we deal with our road maintenance? How do we get additional funding for that? We improved our tax base. That allows us to do a lot of things. But now, one of those kind of last two pieces that we have, they're really kind of taking us to that next level. How do we resolve those two? So those are still the outstanding capital questions that we have. That's all I have.
I'd like to give Commissioners a chance to, since this is the final hearing for us, to give you the chance to go to the governing body. Wanted to give each of the Commissioners a chance to ask any questions, make any comments, so appreciate your, your time. Commissioner Collier, would you like to, again, do you have any questions or?
I, I've asked everything I need.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy with the way things are going.
And you're satisfied with the comprehensive plan, looking it over and comparing it? Good, okay.
No comments?
No comments except for appreciate it. Mr. Calco, very well done.
Commissioner Mensing?
I'm excited that we're not taking things out like the last couple times. That looks great, thank you.
Where parks and rep, they took the beating the last few years.
I know, so I checked it like three times to make sure the trail maintenance was still in there. I was like, is that typo?
And I I'm very hopeful and confident that this, I'm glad you brought up the trails, because that's one of the projects we are pursuing grant right now. With the help of Merchant Actir, who helped us already achieve our first grant of about $50,000 awarded to the police department to help with the purchase of body cameras and stuff. We're factoring out, you know, we haven't brought that yet to the governing body, that's just kind of initial win that we have. And there's other grants that we're we're pursuing that hopefully will will alleviate a lot of our capital burdens as well. So we have kind of, this is kind of, think of this as kind of the worst case CIP right now, minus the ladder truck. That that's the one project where we assume we have to win grants, there's no way we can buy that without getting grants. And the one product, the other, I mentioned the transportation, the other project that fell out of this was also, but it was never in when I presented it to you all, but it was in the slide, that is a, oh, by the way, is a dark fiber project.
Yes.
That's something we're still trying to work out with Comcast. So we hope that we we can we can work out a good deal and not actually have to implement that that massive project or we have to figure out a way to do that.
Did our neighbors get any grants for their new ladder truck? Do we know?
Well, we did before, as I say, so I think the grants were out there for for those assets. And so we're going to keep keep pursuing them. We also have proffer money that we received specifically for that.
Oh, good.
Yeah, the senior apartments provided.
Oh.
Funding for that, because it was to service them if there was a fire there. And so, you know, there's something to give away. So we have that now, we got to figure out how to do it. But grants are, you know, a good a good option for us. And we we looked at a lot of these grants in other jurisdictions in the surrounding area, they've gotten different grants for firefighting that we just haven't. So now we're hopeful that with an actual grant, we're going to start doing some of that.
Commissioner Beckett, do you have any questions or comments?
Just a quick comment, thank you so much for making this information manageable for your north commissioner, and I don't have any additional questions.
Thank you. And I just, this is my first time through it too, and and having the comprehensive plan, it's a was an interesting interesting comparison. I think the commission is going to have an exciting time going through the the plan because the plan is is very general and and broad. And so all the items here, I mean, I didn't see anything that jumped out saying it didn't belong, you know, it wasn't envisioned by the comprehensive plan. What's interesting too is the comprehensive plan, and this is not necessarily your responsibility, but there is on page 112, it talks about adding three separate chapters to the plan for police, fire and rescue. That's just one of a number of items in here. There are a number of aspirational items of 5% of this and 5% of that. And park land, meeting the needs over a five-year period, which would have been '06 to 2011. And now we're 10 years past that, our population has definitely grown. So it's an interesting, it was an interesting comparison. There's a lot of replacement items in here where items that have come to the end of their useful life and and need to be replaced. Do you see at the end of i- i- if we go the way we're going and we're able to do all the replacements we're envisioning in the next five years, do you see us being able to look at possibly expanding certain things? Or we're moving into areas that maybe we aren't able to yet because of the replacements, roofs and the air conditioning and the moving to leasing vehicles versus zoning the vehicles? Do you see a, what is your vision when you?
Yeah.
Five years?
So for, I think for the the comprehensive plan specifically, I think it's right, probably needs to expand this language a little bit more in terms of the other components of, because there's not a lot of, there was a lot of generic language that we could pull for justification.
Yes.
And it probably needs to expand a little bit more. But what I always find helpful with comprehensive plans is you you do want it to be general strategic within the chapters, but I have seen the idea of kind of adding the action items.
Right.
That those get modified, those should be modified, you know, at a more regular basis, whereas your strategic aims, your 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 vision, your end state should try to stay consistent. That's something perhaps to think about as as we look at the next few years. In terms of the CIP, we we've identified, I mean, there's always going to be things that pop up. Facilities are a big one, so we, the challenge right now was how do we get the last two facilities that weren't funded in the 2000s? How do we, how do we address those? We just did with the downtown, we took care of that. The the remaining challenges are exactly what I just, the lease program for, so leasing debt, they're not bad things if you're managing it properly. So the the fleet lease program actually saves, right? So we're using a company that has tremendous economies of scale, because they're the largest owner of fleet in in the world, right? So they they can purchase and sell, maximize the kind of sale of vehicles at the right time to build equity in our program. So we're saving, we're able to modernize our fleet and spend less on fleet programs through that lease lease purchase agreement. So those are kind of creative solutions that we utilize. The remaining things that that again, that haven't been addressed, that need to be addressed are the transportation fund or road maintenance every year, where we have a gap of $750,000 per year that we should be spending. Number two, the dark fiber project, how do we eventually move on from that that requirement, that dependency on Comcast? Or that, number three, the Russia branch stream project, how do we get funding for that project to not put that massive burden all on our residents to have to deal with? And then the bigger one, which I hope that we still have another decade before we even have to start talking about, but we built all these buildings in the 2000s and you're going to have to do some renovations to them eventually. I'm hoping those are 2030s renovations, you've already seen like the high school, which was the first of all those. Now they need a new roof, that's an expensive project, right?
The air conditioning in the schools.
Yes, I wouldn't be surprised if more things start giving out over this next decade for all these facilities. They're going to just add expenditures, but our plan was always to get our debt level to a manageable state where in the 2030s you can consider now taking on issuing a new round of debt to go ahead and renovate your your buildings that you built in the 2000s without ever getting that debt level above the 10% and just punishing the rest of the general fund because you have too much debt, right? So it's man getting it to a manageable level. I'm hoping that's a future governing bodies.
Much future.
30s that we're setting them up for success than anything we're doing now. But again, I think things are going to fail over the next 10 years as we're going to have.
Something always happens.
We're going to have to figure out how to do. But for us, I think for the more immediate is that Russia branch project, road maintenance, we want to slowly get that number up there with journey for that and then figuring out what the plan is for for governing.
Because all these are very important items. And so you you and your staff have done very well with spacing it out and and trying to get it so that, and I was trying to, I couldn't, you've done a very good job of of trying to fit it out over the time. And so I also extend my appreciation for for what you've done. So as we go through the comprehensive plan and think about, because again, do we need more park area for, you know, our our residents? Do we do we need more services or better services or how can we do that? Then we can coordinate to to see what your you and your staff are thinking moving forward so that we can maybe get the comprehensive plan to be more usable that we can we can use moving ahead.
It's definitely worth it to go relooking, because lots changed over the last few years. We had, you know, change of way in doing business, but our new and we're we're moving the city in a good direction.
Good.
Slums Park was a huge addition to our park.
Great. Good, okay.
So there's, you know, there's been a lot of changes, positive ones. The fact that now we have our own library system and it's it's going to get much better with the downtown. Library doesn't change. There's there's a lot of different things now going on, and it's really want to revisit with the comprehensive. Like again, trying to keep craft, stay consistent with your vision, what you want to accomplish, but you always want to have some action items that you go in there that that you are looking at regularly and kind of checking off.
Good, yeah, cool, that's great. Great, so we're good, everybody's had a chance. And there are no members of the public, I'm not I'm not seeing any and nobody on, okay, that's good. Great, thank you very much, we appreciate it. So then if there are no further questions or comments, I'll close the public hearing. The glass is on here. The time is 8:42, actually 7:42, excuse me, it wasn't that long. We weren't here for an hour. Pretty good. Would anyone like to begin discussion or would we like to go to motion if we're ready for a motion?
I think motion.
Okay. Well then, shall I call for a motion to recommend the FY 2022, FY 2026 CIP for approval to the governing body?
So moved.
There's motion, second?
Second.
Second? Any other discussion? All those in favor, signal five as saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Great, thank you. All right. Moving along. We have no unfinished business. Report of special committees, none. And informational update from community development staff. Mr. Berry?
Thank you, Chairman. I do have a few items to share with you, some upcoming events. First of all, Park Center Court is going to be closed starting around April 22nd. This will be for the construction.
Got moved up to the Saturday, the 18th?
Oh, it did?
Yeah, it got moved up, yeah.
Correction, up to the Saturday, the 18th. This is required for the Phase 3 development. And along with that, there'll be some modified traffic patterns along Manassas Drive because it will be a left turn out of this the secondary entrance along Manassas Drive for City Hall. So to accommodate that, there'll be some lane reconfiguration. And as City Manager said, that's happening this Saturday. And just to dovetail on that, we are having the ribbon cunning ceremony for the Phase 3 downtown development tomorrow. And I believe everybody here got an invite, so I hope that you can make it. It's a great thing to celebrate the city's accomplishing this and looking toward the future. So our staff is looking forward to that.
10 o'clock.
Yes. Yes, hopefully.
Yeah, it's looking good so far.
Is it? Oh, good. On another note, there we have had a dilapidated house at 276 Mosby Drive. I'm thrilled to tell you that it has been removed. There was a significant damage done to it or basically rendered completely hazardous condition. So it was removed by our Public Works staff Tuesday, yesterday. So I think we have many happy neighbors that have been a complaint for quite a while and it's good to know that that has been resolved. Some other community items, there is going to be a shred event at the Public Works parking lot, the at 331 Manassas Drive this Saturday from 10 to 2. So if you have, and this is for household personal items that you don't want shredded, it's not for commercial services or offices. So if you have household items or papers that are of secure nature that you want shredded, please come by 331 Manassas Drive. And then the next weekend is the Household Housers Waste Drop Off. That will be at the Manassas Transfer Station located in 8305 Corrie Road. And that will be from 8:00 AM to noon, and that's Saturday, April 24th. So that is it. I just wanted to say next month, I think we will be coming forward with that commercial vehicle ordinance amendment. There's actually two components of it. One is regarding parking, which is a separate section, which the planning commission won't be voting on, but we will provide that to you for background information. But there will be zoning ordinance amendment regarding the commercial vehicles because we need to change how many commercial vehicles you can have on your property as well as modifying the RV permissible locations. There's there's a long section in the zoning ordinance about that and that needs to be modified and influenced by the desire to do everybody. And then we should hopefully have another site plan that's pending right now that we can bring forward to you next month. So I'm hoping you can get one of those deployed. And that's all I have, if you have any other questions.
Commissioner Beckett, any questions?
Yeah, no questions from you.
Great, thank you. Very good. And then with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Move, motion, second?
Second.
Second? All those in favor, signal five as saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The time is 7:47.